Thank you, Amanda. Or was that you, Paula?
That was Amanda.
Amanda, alright. Okay, so I'm gonna call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectment Special Meeting for Budget Workshop for January 25th, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the State. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice. Alright, thank you very much. Let's get on to public speak. Diane Chuket?
I'm good, thanks.
Alright. And Kimberly Person?
I'm all set, thank you.
I think that's everybody we have. Still, we're gonna move on to item three, Budget Workshop for fiscal year 2022-2023, proposed on budget.
Can I make a proposal? For the purposes of all of us keeping our sanity, maybe we can keep these to like an hour and a half or something?
I will me.
Anyone else have any?
No? Okay. Before we get started and we go into this line by line, let's, let's just have a basic conversation between the five of us. If there's anything specific that we should really be focusing on, or anybody wants to see to try to get into the budget, and then we can maybe work ourselves around to that. So, does anybody have anything specific that they would like to see accomplished? Or that we should try to fit into this budget? Adrian, why don't you go first?
I thought I'd let everybody else.
No, heck no.
Alright, well, I have a couple different things, actually. To start with, I would like us to, as a group, make a decision. If the numbers come back favorably from the architects that we pushed forward with the community building project for, you know, for this year, I'd like us to use the money that we got from the American Cares Act, especially considering the limitations that have been put on it. I don't think we want to be crossing the gray areas that we had talked about, maybe looking at before. Given what happened on the other part of the state, the state has notified the towns that we're gonna be audited. Every town will be audited on how they use the money. So, there's no more gray area on this. It's either it is or it isn't. So, and given that the community center project fits that, you know, I think that's the correct use of that funds. It fits all the other guidelines that we'd like to use the funding for. And this is, this was the number one ask, you know, from people when the community surveys went out a couple of years ago, and this has been on the radar for the town since 1969. They asked for one before, and unfortunately, because of the, what was going on in the town at the time, when they got lots of money for community center, they ended up using it for something else. So, I think this is the right time to do that. If we do it correctly, using those funds, it literally should be a zero, a zero impact to the town. You know, and I, I think that's the correct use. Do you guys want me to do them one at a time, or you want me to just go through everything?
You just keep going.
I would also like us to look at our staffing and our pay scale. I think that we, as a community, you know, have been kind of heading around this for a while. But I think, given where inflation is doing right now, we are gonna have to increase our dollar value that we pay some of our town employees. I don't know that we can get comparable to other towns around us. I still think that's a stretch. But I think we need to get a little closer in a couple of different positions. I think that we can do that fairly inexpensively. It's, it's so minimal. I mean, we're literally talking a couple thousand dollars per year for each position, and we could phase that in by doing it, you know, a dollar at the turnover in the budget, and then a dollar, say, in January of next year, and that gets us a little closer to where we should be in some of those positions, and it doesn't affect the town quite as much this year. I would like us, as a whole, to be looking at public works. We have so much work going on down there. And I think the residents have seen the positive things that we've done, from the transfer station to the tree work, to the, you know, you know, to the, to the catching up on some of the road maintenance. And we still have a lot more that to do. We have a bridge that's coming into play. We've got a lot of culverts coming into play. And in order to do that effectively, we, we need more staff there. And if we do it now, the timing works, because a couple of staff members that we have down there, you know, one of them's gonna be coming up for retirement here in the next five to seven years. Another one is actually technically retired, but came back out of the workforce to work for us. So I, I think we probably lose him in the next four years or so. So, bringing someone in now, teaching them the ropes, investing in that personnel will mean that when the time comes for those people to leave, the department will be right-sized on its own without letting go of somebody, or without also losing the institutional knowledge that we have there. So I think that's the right thing to do, too. And beyond that, I think that we're in a pretty good place to do some of these things. The grant list has some pretty strong adjustments. But it also means that our, you know, our, if we do this correctly, and we work with the Board of Finance, that we'll be looking at our mill rate coming down substantially, and we'll be much more competitive with surrounding towns. You know, lot prices have gone up, but I think overall, if we do the changes correctly, given the shifts that we're gonna see with the RAM budget a little bit, because of the the offset from the bond being caught up, I think we can really do some, some good here. And last but not least, I sent out an email, and I still don't have an answer for it, but we're gonna probably be looking at, in the next, you know, four or five years, looking at a repaving over at the school. It's gonna probably be more of a Board of Finance question, but I think we need to try to establish a fund for, you know, paying for paving the parking lot at the school and up, you know, the upper area and the lower area. I mean, that's $150,000 to a $200,000 project. And I'm hoping, actually, maybe we could combine that with, when we do the community building, doing the town parking lot as well, because that's gonna have to get redone when that's all done. So, it may be something we can combine together and get a better price for everybody. But more importantly, if we put this money aside now, we're saving for something. So it hits, instead of it, the town coming back, or the school coming back and saying, hey, I need $200,000 for this capital works project, which actually is also really a town project, because although that, although, excuse me, although that parking lot is attached to the school, the town owns the building and the land, and, you know, we use that facility for a bunch of things, too. So, it's the overflow parking area, you know. So, I think long-term, we need to probably look at, you know, talking to Board of Finance about how to put money away for that. And a simple solution may be that we ask the Board of Finance to use the money that's currently going to the bond, which is no longer coming up, to put that aside for the next two years. And that would pay for the, the paving of the, the parking lots. And again, you know, the money's there, we're already spending it. It's going away, it's phasing out, because that bond's paid for. So, it's just long-term planning. I really think this budget needs to be us looking at long-term, you know, and stop being so short-sighted. We've been really good about moving things forward in the past. I don't want us to, to stop now. I think we probably have a couple more years of that, and, you know, but not growing the budget in a big way, doing it very, very modestly, so that the town can, you know, can, can see the projects, the process that we're going through, but also see the things we're doing good for them, you know? So, there's my speech.
Alright, thank you. I'll go to, uh, I'll go to Scott.
Okay, I, I second the community center with Adrian and the town hall, the salaries, and with the DPW. And, you know, I went to that meeting the other day about the bridge, and they're telling us it's gonna be 200 more. So I just wanna let everybody know that. And, and I also would like a pickleball court.
Okay. So, did you say the bridge will cost us 200,000 more than it's been budgeted?
Yeah.
Is it 200,000 of our contribution, or 200,000?
200 more for our, our contribution, right?
Wow. So the bridge went up dramatically?
Yeah.
Because our contribution is what? Is it 15% or 25%?
600,000, 20%?
Yeah, yeah. So it's gonna go up to, you know, five, five or 600, I think.
Wow. Well, it'd have to be more than that if our contribution's going up 200.
So they're saying that bridge is gonna cost $3 million?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow. Was there some sort of change that, that they're worried about, or is it?
No, just, they said that that price may come down. But they're, they're only speculating. They don't know for sure.
Are they trying to say it's because of the steel? What are they saying?
Everything went up, everything went up so much.
Alright, well, let's sit there and get a, an answer on that one. Paula?
I like, I like the idea of thinking long-term. And I wanna have a little more discussion about what Adrian brought up about the public works. I don't wanna be in a pickle where we're adding somebody and then we don't need them. So, I'm interested in having a conversation about that. And then always big-picture thinking. I like to think about, you know, what the residents have said in the past, what they're looking for, and trying to stay, stay with that as well. So.
Mr. Murray?
Agreed on the community center, public works and the salaries. One thing that, going forward, and that I've kind of been getting some rumblings about is the, I hope that we're gonna see, and I know Sherry's camera's off now, but hopefully we will get detailed budgets for all entities, including the school. You know, the discussion we had the other day, when I questioned with Eric about the contracts during this budget session, I, I don't know whatever other people think, but, you know, I think it's a good idea that we get most of our major contracts and our budget on the website, so people can actually see what we're spending for all our contracted services and be transparent as possible. I don't wanna avoid, I wanna avoid a, a repeat of last year. And I'm hoping that all our entities will get the contracts and the budgets out in as transparent as possible.
Okay, I, I can, I can just chime in and say, I don't know how they're gonna handle contracts, per se. But the, the school board, at this point, has had a lot of presentation on the current budget. There's still a couple, a couple more workshops to go. And there's definitely gonna be a much more detailed budget than we've had in the past. And I think they're gonna put into things that we're looking to see as, as residents, you know, and as board members, to alleviate some of the concerns. I think this, the school as a whole is very much aware of what they need to show to get the budgets, you know, passed without the, you know, without the, the issues that have maybe been in there in the past. So, I think, I think the school's trying to do a really good job at this point. And, you know, let's, let's wait and see. I haven't seen an actual 100% put-together budget, but from what we've seen so far, and what the numbers look like, I think it's, you know, I think what they're asking for at this point so far, from what we've seen, is literally exactly what they need and not a lot of fluff. So, if that continues, I don't think we have any issues. I think that they're, they're doing what they need to do. So let's give them a chance to do it.
Okay, yeah, my issue's not fluff. My, my issue's transparency. I just want everything out there, so, you know, people can actually see things, because when it's not out there, there's, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's always rumor mongering going around on social media and everything.
Yeah, the budget.
I just wanna make sure that it's out there to say, look, it's out here on this website, you can see it, you know?
Yeah, the budget presentation is, is a lot different than it's been in the past. Sherry put together a much more detailed budget that breaks things down, you know, before we used to have like one supply closet line that everything just got piled into. That's now literally broken down by grade, indeed, you know. So, I think the details are there. Again, I don't think we have an issue with that, so.
Yeah, just like our East Con contracts, all that stuff that they have. It'd be nice to see all that stuff right out in the.
I'm not sure what their, I'm not sure what their policy's gonna be on that. Sherry may be able to speak to that. I can't, so.
Today, we were discussing of how we could put this together and how it would look to make sure that we are as transparent as we can be. So Val and I have been working on that kind of thing. There is gonna be a ton more on detail, and it just has to be, and there will be. What we've done thus far has been a lot of presentation, a lot of details, and a lot of going over the figures and what each account makes it up, that dollar figure. And so I think a lot of residents will, will like that, and to know what, when they look at a particular account, what, what is in that account. We've tried to keep everything online on our website, so you can go back in and to each presentation and take a look at it. PowerPoint presentation. We are putting together a draft of grants, a list of grants, and what they pay for, so.
That's been a big ask, and that's awesome.
Yeah, it's good. Glad to hear that.
Sure. And I'm not quite sure how we're going to do the contracts. I, I think that's the last piece that we have to go over and, and see what we can do about that.
Yeah, if you guys, if you're kind of, you know, going back and forth on what to do, I would, I would look into the Glastonbury Education, their website. They have a really good layout of all their contracts, down to the custodians' contracts.
Yeah.
Really well laid out, and it's very, it's very, it's very easy to navigate.
Okay.
And if we could do something similar to that, it would be, it would be, I think, beneficial to the residents, just so they could go in and see. Because if, you know, what, what's exactly spent, we can be 100% transparent, so we know, so everybody knows, you know, where their dollars are going.
Sure. I know the business manager over there, so I can just give her a call.
Yeah, I mean, they, they did an excellent job, both their, both their town budget and the school, the schools. It's an excellent job.
Alright.
I would use that as a model if you're gonna benchmark somebody.
Sure, I'll do that. Thank you.
Nope, no problem.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna stick with the transparency side, and even though I believe we need to be as transparent as possible on the budget. I also believe we need to be as transparent as possible on the revenue side, which is really related to the revale. And I am going to make some requests of Eric to provide information to the residents as to how the revale was completed in detail. Because it's very, it's very apparent to me and to the communication that I've had with the residents relating to the, to the revale, that it's very difficult to obtain information and to get questions answered in an appropriate manner. So, you know, if transparency is the call for this year, which I am all for, I want it to be the revaluation to be as transparent as it possibly can be. So, as far as one thing, since we're talking about things that we would like to see related to the community building, I definitely believe that the town needs to consider consolidating the senior and the recreational coordinators' position, and the COOL program in totality should sit there and be considered as a town program. And we should sit there and have an employee that is dedicated to that, that runs the senior programs, the recreational programs, and we should find a way to fund that. Because I think it would be valuable for the community, not only short-term, but long-term, as Adrian has addressed. And we need to find ways to pay for that. And one of the ways to pay for that is really after-school programming. And we should use the assets that we have in the, in the gym, and, and the, you know, our, our fields as much as possible to sit there and generate some money to pay for that position. But.
Um, I just need to, to point out something, I, maybe you're not aware of, Jeff. Although, although COOL program, you know, does use town assets, it is not a town program. It's run by a nonprofit.
I know it's not a town program. I'm saying it should be a town.
They just need to change the charter, I think.
Well, but there's a, there's a whole board over there that needs to agree to that. So I think it's, it's preemptive of us to even have that discussion.
I, I've had this discussion with Amy and other individuals before, and I'm just bringing it out in public.
But it's not even up to Amy. It's up to the board that's there.
Adrian, it's up to the town. It's up to this board.
Not, because it's a nonprofit. It's not a town.
Adrian, just listen to me for a second. It's, it's a nonprofit that utilizes town assets. If the town decides it doesn't want to allow that board to use the town asset and puts a town function in there, the town can sit there and have its own program, just like Glastonbury, just like West Hartford, just like all of the other communities around here. And that's the issue. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be mean about it. I'm just sitting there saying very simply that that program, if it's run correctly, and it's run for, and it's run great. I love Amy. I'm not sitting there saying anything about it. I've talked to Amy about this. It should be a town program, and it should sit there and allow the town to use whatever potential revenue can be generated from that to support a full-time employee for the town. Whether that's someone that's currently working for COOL or not, that's great. That is my recommendation. So.
I'm behind Jeff on this, Adrian, also. Just to let you know.
No, it's, it's not that I'm, just to be clear, I'm not saying I'm against it or I'm for it. I'm simply saying that that's a conversation that should, that, that should, that should be a conversation that the board at COOL is having and coming to us and saying, not us going to them and saying, you know, because it, it just feels a little, it feels a little heavy-handed when we have a program that's in town that a lot of people love, and a lot of people are supportive of, myself included. You know, we have the Rec Commission working with them for summer program. We have the after-school program, which is super successful. And then all of a sudden, we start talking about, quote-unquote, taking it over. It just doesn't feel right to me, that's all.
Adrian, I've had this conversation with all the members there. So.
I understand what you're saying. It just feels a little weird. If you've had that conversation, then why haven't they come to us and asked for this?
I just, just keep in mind, everyone, now that it's its own run entity, they, they hire and
Right.
terminate their own employees. They offer whatever benefits they offer when they become town employees full-time, town benefits.
Not, they wouldn't, only one person would end up being full-time, Jeff, because those, those individuals, you know, if, if I'm understanding the timeline, there's, there's groups that come in. Well, anyway, I'm just telling you, I don't even care if we, we don't do COOL. I am just looking at that going, that's a revenue source that the town should be potentially taking advantage of to pay for a full-time employee. I don't care if we just have a full-time employee.
I think.
Saying revenue source, it shouldn't be a revenue source.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a service that COOL provides to the town and costs us basically nothing.
Yes.
Adrian, if I sat there and generated money from the, from, from care, and I could use that to pay for the full-time employee, just like the, oh, forget it. I don't even have to sit there and explain. I shouldn't have to explain it. So, anyway.
A disagreement of perspective, that's all, Jeff. It's not personal.
It's, I'm not worried about it being personal. I, I mean, you're not ma, you're not making it personal. I'm trying to explain to you, from a business perspective, how I would do it.
But, but the problem is, I'll make it plain to you from a business perspective, then. You're talking about a corporate takeover of another company.
I am not. We are renting them an asset. You, you, you are renting them an asset. If you don't like it, and you don't sit there and think it's a good idea, fine, I'm one vote. I've, I've thought that this should happen for the last seven years.
There's, there's, your opinion comes out when your vote is cast.
Yep.
So, anyway, we should sit there and still fund some type of employee more than Roberta to sit there and deal with not only senior programs, but also recreational programs.
Recreation, right, exactly.
Someone that, someone that helps run the, the registration for the parents for soccer and baseball.
I, I think we definitely do all of that when we got a building up to, to house them in, you know? And, and to, and to do more of those things, you know?
I, I think what we're doing is broaching this subject, Adrian.
Yeah, I just think it's a little premature. You know? And again, I would love it if you guys went to the COOL board, talked to them about what you are suggesting, and they, they wrote us a letter back and said, yeah, we really would like to do this. Let's try to work with the town, you know?
Okay. I'll sit there and do that.
Please do. And then I will be 100% supportive.
Oh, I'm sure you will. So, let's, let's move on. Where would we like to go to sit there and get through some of these departments? Or is there anything specific someone likes to talk to about tonight?
I, I, at some point, unfortunately, can't do it tonight, but I'd like to get it on the agenda moving forward. I'd like a, a really, an in-house explanation from, I sent an email out regarding this today, an in-house explanation regarding the RAM services from AHM, you know, that are, they're provided to all the, you know, Andover, Marlboro, you know, Hebron. So, I would like to get them on the agenda, but other than that, I'm open to start wherever you want to, Jeff.
Well, I mean, listen, are we gonna run through this and try to check off each department?
Well, do you want to, do you want to start working your way through Eric's summation? Do you want to start with the big changes? I mean, Sherry, do you have, do you have anything from Eric? Or do you like to highlight the, the high-level changes, and maybe we can just start picking some of those off? No? Or Jeff, do you want to start with Eric's summation and just work our way through it?
Yeah, let's go through Eric's stuff. I mean, you know.
I don't have anything that really sticks out, basically. Him and I just went through the entire budget and did the best we could and what we knew.
What's the easiest ones to do? Maybe capital?
Yeah, let's go through the.
Yeah, probably.
Can we do that? Is that alright, Sherry?
That's fine. I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
The word.
Excuse me, one second. There's still a, a few areas that we have to find to, which is, you know, like mostly in the, the insurance piece of it.
Okay.
The health insurance, we did get word that it'll be the same rate as last year, but then now they're going to take a minus 4% off of what we put down as an expenditure. So, I have to do those numbers now. On both sides, the town and, and the board.
Explain that, minus 4%?
In the consortium, it looks that our fund balances look really healthy. And they've decided that what they can do is not only a 0% increase over last year on the rates, but they wanna take a negative 4% off of what the town owns and the board owns, you know, each separately in entity. So, we have to figure out how much it is that we're going to budget and take 4% of that to deduct it. And that's the amount that we will be paying to them.
So, the consortium has never, has the consortium ever sat there and refunded us any, any money yet? Never?
No, it's fairly new. We, just the first time we got to that point. I mean.
This consortium's been in place for almost five years.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know how long it's been, but, you know, because I'm new here, obviously, but we're, we're doing quite well. And I do tend the meetings on a regular basis, and things are looking good as far as that goes.
So we could see a 4% decrease in our premiums?
Yeah, in our total that we set up for the health insurance expenditure, health and dental.
Okay. And do you know the total dollars on that?
I don't. That's why I have to get you that number. It just, it just occurred the other day when they had a meeting that they made this decision.
Okay. That's good news.
And I will, as soon as I calculate that out, I will send it to all the board members.
Okay. Eric had sent out a Word document on capital funds. Everybody got that?
I will in a second.
He's really not talking about significant increases in anything. Public Works capital is up $10,000. The fire engine fund he's proposing.
He sent it out on Tuesday, the 18th, if anyone's looking for it. He sent it out on Tuesday, the 18th, if anyone's looking for it. Sherry, did you work with Eric on this, the, the Capital Works Fund?
Capital Works now.
Okay.
I mean, he did tell me about it, um, you know, went over it and.
I, I just didn't know if this, the 115, is that including the money that they're asking for, for the, um, skid steer?
Asking for the what?
They're asking for a skid steer, the 115 that's in the proposed 2223. Is that inclusive of that?
Yeah, I don't know. I have to, I have to find that out.
Okay. And I, I'll apologize to the, I just want to apologize to selectmen. Um, Jay unfortunately got called in. Pretty late last night, so he had already been up since, you know, 11 or so yesterday evening. So, he was not, he was gonna be on the meeting tonight, but. Given that we also have a major storm coming Friday, Saturday, he was hoping to try to get some sleep tonight, so that's why he's not on the meeting.
Uh, it does not appear to be, um, the skid steer in this number. It appears to be. Rust repair for the truck were, you know, $8,000, an excavator for 90. I mean, I, I maybe I'm reading this wrong. That was last year, wasn't it? Excavator? And a plate compactor? Didn't we buy all those last year?
They, they were, yeah. That's last year.
So, this information is not updated. Okay. So, maybe we should skip this one.
There is a, um, yeah, he didn't update it. Especially.
So, he updated, listen, he updated what he wants to put into this, but he didn't give us any of the details. So.
Yeah, okay.
It looks like he's sitting there looking for $115,000 for public works, but didn't provide us the details. The fire engine fund is still at 100, the. Building maintenance at 60. Nothing changed from a request from the prior year except the roadwork fund for $30,000.
Yeah, it's also not in the, um, it's not in the bunker hill stuff, not in there either.
No.
Well, bunker hill is at 120.
Now, it's 120 into the fund, but it's, it's staying contribute only around 400,000 and that's gonna be up to what, 600, so. So, that's not updated.
Okay, so, let's find another piece of information.
Okay.
Do we want to go through the budget book? Does that make sense to anyone?
No, because it's really just that, I mean, you can, we can go through it, but it's gonna.
It's just a layout. I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's really just about telling residents what the schedule is, how each, each entity does their budget from RAM to the school, you know? From what I saw, I didn't, um. It talks about town fees, you know, where some of our revenues come in.
Yeah, but, but let's talk about, and, and I'm not sure, you know. Uh, let's talk about his personnel changes because this falls into the request of pay scale.
Okay.
So. Eric is looking to increase staff at Public Works from three to four. We already did this. All right, so all the information that was provided to us in this email is gonna be questionable.
Yes, unfortunately, that looks like it.
Yeah, so I don't really want to continue to go through that and sit there. And so, Sherry, what information do you have for us from the finance department that we should start considering? Related to our budget?
In what way?
Well, this spreadsheet that we received is 2022, 2023 town budget document.
Right.
You and Eric, um, adjusted this, updated this?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, um, updated all the departments along with Eric.
Is, are we talking about the spreadsheet or the budget book?
The spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet.
All right, when did, when, what's the most updated one? When did you send that one out? I have, I have, I'm sorry.
Actually got it out the other day by Eric.
Okay.
Sent it out.
All right, so that one is current.
Yes.
All right.
That is.
I mean, if we also, I guess the other question is, do we want to, some of this stuff, if we get into talks about personnel costs. Um, and that's really an Eric, that's a conversation we kind of need Eric for.
Well, can we go over which one of those were, or all of them that we're going to want to do?
Well, you might as well, we might as well just go down to the, the details and at least get through a few of these things and talk about what we need to do. So. You get on to row 71, it starts the selectman budget.
I kind of feel like we're just kind of hopping around here.
Well, that's what we're gonna do. So, in that section in row 71, it just goes through the, the expenses that are related to us. And. Well, see, this is just the, the spreadsheet's not updated. So, to be really honest, you're gonna have to wait till Eric updates, updates this with Sherry. I mean, I'm assuming that.
Yeah, because that's not.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the other selectmen have not sat there and said they're not going to take. Compensation, so that would need to go in there and then. Um. Well. Anyone have any recommendations as to what they'd like to talk about related to the overall budget? I mean, we can sit there and. Give Eric our summary of the requests that we had because, you know, we didn't get into it. I, I have no problem with the community building going through that. Pay scale is a little bit more difficult. You're gonna have to figure out what you're asking the people to do and for what money, but.
All right, well, well, let's, I mean, let's start there then. Let's open up.
That, that would be a good place to start right there.
Did, he did give us, if you go back, he gave us an Excel spreadsheet, um, I think it was maybe on the. It would have been on, uh, the 4th of January. He sent us out an Excel spreadsheet with. Current pay scale, hours per week, current salary, and what increases would look like.
Yeah.
So, can we look at that?
Sure.
Start there. We'll just go through the individual positions and figure out what we want to do.
It was the 4th?
Yeah, January 4th of this year.
I mean, basically, he sat there and the majority of these people are per contract. Unless I'm missing something, which is quite possible. Why this doesn't work?
Well, I mean, all the non-union employees are listed as well. And we're gonna have to make some decisions where we want to move these people to, so.
And the non-union, we need to know as far as what increase.
Right. And Eric has it in there, current increases or potential new salaries, you know, and what.
Right. 101%, 2%, 3%.
It's all in there. So, let's pull that up. Um, do we want to start with the easy ones first?
Sure, go ahead. Which one would you like to talk?
All right, so line 21 would be Addie Winter, Land Use Clerk. Um. She just got hired and her pay rate, I think, is. You know, once, once she gets her regular, you know, whatever we decide for an increase. And I'm gonna be honest, I, I know. Given what inflation is doing, I really do think we probably need to be on the higher end of this increase scale. Eric gave us a 1 to 3%, but as all of you know. Gas is at, you know, 3, 340, 350. Everything's getting more expensive, so. I think we have to recognize that. And honestly, if we don't, we risk these people just joining a union and then the union forcing it on us. So. I think we need to be aware of that too, in some cases, so.
Well, then, why not just sit there and take the high end of the space scale and just say this is what we're gonna do across the board?
I think we can do that for some, and others, it's not gonna quite get us there. So, like for, um. Three, and we gave 3% to library clerks, they're still under minimum wage on, on August, if you look at the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So, I would say my, my proposal would be that we look at the library clerks moving them to the minimum wage of $14 an hour. At the very least. I mean, they are all part-time and they all work varying hours, but, you know. We actually have to be at least there. The question is, do we need, do, do we want to be more than there? Feedback?
I'm trying to determine what the increases.
7% if you go, if you go from 13, 13 to 14, 13, you'd be about 7%.
6.46. And, and it really doesn't matter. I mean, they, I mean, listen, they should all get paid more money. It's a question of if we can afford it. So.
It's, it's minimal.
No, no, I mean, they have to get paid.
I think, I think what we do is if we can work our way through this whole sheet, figure out where we want to be. And then, and then from there, we'll have an, we'll have a number to how, see how this impacts our budget next week when Eric gets it all tallied in with Sherry. So, I, my first proposal would be that the library clerks, we give them a dollar raise, get them at 14, 13.
Okay.
Anyone second that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Jeff, you're shaking your head. You have a better idea?
Oh, no, no, no. I, I'm shaking my head because I'm, I'm calculating out the total amount of the 3% increase is across everyone and it's $9,305.
I, yeah, but we're, we're, I don't think we can do that in this particular case. Some of these have to be adjusted more than that.
No, give everyone that is a library clerk $14 an hour in a minimum.
Yeah, so my dollar would get them to 14, 13.
Fine, $1. I'll, I'll agree to that.
Do you want to call?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you want to call a vote on that one?
Discussing.
Any further discussion? I was discussing it with myself, so.
I'm sorry.
Further discussion? No. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, that's a block off.
Well, that's $14.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna add a dollar, so there'll be a 14.
Dollar, okay. Yeah.
Um.
And then, you know, you just go from the top, I mean.
Well, let's go with some of the easier ones. I'd like to see us take Dominic and Steve. I'd like, we need to get them, the, the, the pay rates right now. I mean, you can go, you can go to, you can go to Home Depot and make 1650 an hour to start, so. I'd like to see Dominic get, and Steve get a dollar raise in July 1 and they get another dollar in January. That'd be my proposal. That gets them closer, you know, gets them off that baseline pay. I mean, especially when minimum wage is gonna be up to 14, for crying out loud. That would get them closer to what other towns are making in those positions. You know, it's 19 bucks an hour down the street, so. That would get us to, uh, that would get us to 1832 going into next year's budget.
I mean, how many hours have we totally worked? I don't work very many hours, do I?
Nope, nope. Steve works eight, eight hours a week and Dominic works 17.
17, yeah.
And why not just give them the whole raise up?
I'm okay with that. I was trying to make it more palatable for folks. I, I will amend my, I'll amend my proposal to giving them the $2 an hour now. You want a second, Jeff?
Sure, I'll second it. Further discussion?
So, what, what's the advantage? I'm just trying to follow your train of thought. What was, what was the advantage of doing a dollar? Um.
Because our town has been ridiculously frugal in the past. I didn't know if you guys would, would, would be okay with it. I'm, I'm just being honest. I.
But, but it, it was getting them to that point by next spring.
Yeah, I mean, to get them to that point by next spring so that they're closer to comparable towns, you know? But I, I'd like to get them there sooner. I just didn't know if people would be supportive of it. Although it's not a lot of money. It's, it's so, it's so miniscule, it's not even funny, you know?
Well, why don't we, um.
I mean, in the case of Steve, for instance, it's, we're giving him $2 more an hour. It's, it's gonna be a grand total of, you know, you know, what, 16 bucks a week, you know? But, but to him, it may mean something, you know?
Yeah, in 2023, we're going up to $15 anyway.
Right, right.
By June 2023.
Right, so.
Well, does anyone have a problem with it?
I'll call, I guess.
No, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay, so let's, uh, call a question. All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Aye, that takes care of transfer station. Library Director, I think we could just put that in with our regular pay scale increases. Um, Custodian, it was recently hired and that's a fair rate for what he's doing, so I don't think we need to address that. We can just do the regular percentage increase we're doing. Um. Senior Transportation for the drivers, um. I think I would like to hold off that conversation until Eric gets back, but. I think we're probably gonna have to raise the pay scale there as well. I just don't know what that needs to be. Eric, I, I believe had some sort of survey of surrounding towns with that, so.
Yeah, he has some information to share.
Okay, so, do you, um, do you remember what the, what the number was he was looking for? Because it's not, that's the one thing that's not in this.
The number he was looking for?
Yeah, to increase their pay too?
No, he just left it blank because he had the information that he wanted to present.
Okay, so, we can hold off on that one.
And then talk about what it would look like.
Okay. Um.
I would ask Sherry that she could, you put in a 3% increase for all their other positions. And just show us what the numbers come out at, and then we can all discuss it at our next meeting.
Okay.
That's, that's fair enough. Yep. For everything else, we didn't address directly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, we don't have to vote on anything else until Eric comes back if he wants to discuss something with us, because he deals with it on a daily basis.
Well, we talked about a town planner was part of our meeting last week. Do we want to talk about putting money in there for a town planner?
I thought we voted no on that.
I thought we didn't vote on it yet.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't do a vote.
We didn't vote.
We just kind of had questions and.
And it's a one, one of the things that's, one of the things that's come up as part of this conversation is that. The one thing that we should actually at the very least be looking at is that we're currently paying. An attorney, $180 an hour to address updating the regulations. Where we may be able to pay a planner something closer to $35 or $40 an hour. So, at the very least, we should have somebody on staff addressing those issues, you know?
And do, does any, Sherry, do you know how much we paid the attorney for any of this $180 an hour work?
Um, I'd have to look that up. I don't know off the top of my head.
Good. So, if, if at the next meeting, we can have that, so we can sit there and say. Here's a, here's an offset for the 189 hours.
Yeah, well, I mean, it addresses a bunch of issues. It's also, it's an offset to that, but it's also, this is something that, you know, our. Our planning board and our zoning board and our, you know, all of them have been asking us to address because it puts a lot of, it puts a lot of. Onerous on those organization heads, you know, as, as the chair. To deal with a lot of this stuff that really may be out of their day-to-day purview, you know?
Okay.
We need to talk about increasing the hours also.
Well, we just did that. We already agreed to that.
One, for one person.
Yes.
One person.
If, and, and look, to put this in perspective, if we put in a town planner at $40 an hour for four hours a week. The grand total for the year is $8,332. I would say we asked Eric to at least put that in the budget so we can see what it looks like. That would be my motion.
Anyone want to second that? Anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
Um, further discussion on that topic? I mean, I, I, I do think it's, it's necessary. I just sit there and I struggle with the fact that he can come up with any, or she can come up with any great ideas, again, those executed is a different issue.
And, oh, but again, that they're not gonna, they're not done changing, changing the zoning regulations. I don't know if you get the Capitol report, but one of the things that they're gonna try to force down everybody's throat is a density, a cha, a change in density regulations. So they, they changed a bunch last year. We know they're gonna change some more coming this year. So we addressed those issues. We addressed some of the other things that we have, and, and we do have some things that in our future that look bright coming to town, so I think it would be good to maybe try to capitalize on that. At the very least, if there was ever an opportunity to move it forward, maybe now's the time, and for eight grand, I think I can live with that, so.
But Adrian, you need a, a plant, town planner that can change zoning regulations.
So what do we need to make that happen, Scott?
Usually the attorneys take care of that stuff.
Well, I think he was talking about, um, the gentleman, I think the guy used to work in Milltown. Do you remember his name? Is it?
Yep, Bill Warner.
Bill Warner. I mean, so they could put that together and, and, and so that the zoning regulations meet, and then we just have to have an attorney look through it rather than build it, you know what I mean?
You, you usually have to have both of them.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm saying. So, but we have one person write the script and the other person's reviewing it, basically. They'll still save us money there, but more importantly, we'll be addressing something that the communities, we get a presentation every single year on this. I, I got it on the Board of Finance. We've got it on the Board of Select Ben every year that I've been.
Adrian, I'm, I'm, I'm all for a town planner, but it's not specific enough yet. It's not specific. I don't know what I'm agreeing to.
You're agreeing to forty dollars an hour, four hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year.
What's his job? Or her, her job?
Town planner. What you define that as is up to you between you and Eric. I don't really care. I just know I keep getting asked for one, so I'm kind of getting sick of asking, and I know we do need one to some extent, you know?
We do. It would be good, but we have to find out more about what we're going to have this person do.
Well, in my conversation with Eric, he thought four hours a week would be a good start. That's why I'm proposing it, so.
Well, why don't we see what the numbers are and then pick Eric's brain and see what he thinks the person would do?
I think the reason I'm asking for it in this manner is that this way, when they come back to us with the sheet, we'll have a, we'll have a number plugged in and a, and a line plugged in that we currently don't have. Cause I don't think, I don't think in this budget cycle, you know, Sherry's not in a position to build this sheet out as we go forward. You know, she, I think she'd like to be able to come into the meeting with the stuff kind of plugged in and then make a modification rather than try to build it out.
So, so.
While we're sitting here.
I'll sit there and I'll give you Eric's, since he's not here, I'll, I'll give you this. Eric says a town planner, five to ten hours per week would take a lot, would take out a lot of the planning aspects from the P and Z, PZC chair. Would do a lot of the plan review that the CEO has to do now. Ideally, this position combined with the EDC responsibilities and made bigger would carry some of the burden of the plan of conservation and development. Most planners will share some of the grant writing for the town. For instance, the grant for the route group three sixteen multi-use path, that would be a planner responsibility usually. X, expect to pay seventy-five dollars per hour for a part-time planner without benefits. This year, the legislature changed large sections of the state land use regulations. That happens every few years and towns have to adapt regulations to match, to match. Right now, we pay the town zoning attorney to do that. He charges a hundred and eighty-five dollars per hour. Last time we had a planner was two thousand eight. Someone named Stuart Popper, when he left, was not replaced for cost reasons. The town used to combine planner and CEO into one position. This is really a good fit because they're different skill sets and a good planner is paid too much per hour to go knocking heads, as Eric likes to say. So. That's basically what he, he sat there and said.
All right, so I'll modify my, my proposal to, you know, to include the, was it seventy-five an hour? Four hours per week?
That's, it's fifteen thousand, Adrian.
Five, yeah.
Yep. I know he wants five to ten. I just don't know that. I, I want to see what that person does before we increase that number.
I believe it's, it's, it's a good idea and I believe that they, they need that help down there. I just want to make sure that they're doing.
So why don't we, why don't we let Eric come back to us on this one? Because it will be a significant line item increase. It's gonna go from zero to X and.
Can we, can we ask Sherry to at least put a line in the budget with?
I would say that that's a good idea, Adrian. Put it in there so we don't forget it.
Right.
Yeah, and then you want me to cost it out at seventy-five?
Seventy-five an hour.
Have, have Eric cost it out for, what Eric believes it will, will take.
He wants five to ten, but I don't think, you know.
But we'll settle on something.
Why don't we settle on five to start with and see what that looks like?
Okay.
That's the low end of what he asked for, so.
Right.
Any objection? Oh, we can always take it out.
We don't need to vote out it. We haven't approved it. We've just added, asked for a line to be there to show us.
Yep.
What happened.
Okay. I think that and the other changes we've made, everybody else gets hit with the three percent. We're fine. The only question, the bigger issue on the table was whether or not we want to look at moving Amanda to a more long, a, a, a bigger position, which is one of the things Eric was asking for.
Why don't we let Eric sit there and give us the pitch on that so we understand exactly?
Eric has given us the pitch extensively more than once.
I understand, but we're gonna put it into the budget and if we all agree on it, let's have the conversation, not us five here, uh, without him. Let's have a conversation with him and we'll do it next week.
So you want to put that in as an, as a modification?
Not yet.
I'm not modifying anything. I mean, I'm gonna sit there and let Eric modify and then we'll agree to it or not agree to it, right?
Okay.
And there's, is there anybody else on here that we need to discuss besides Eric and Jay? I mean, that's it?
Um, I also would like us to talk about, Sherry, what's our minimum, our number of hours now to, um, to get insurance?
Um. I think it's, um, thirty.
It's thirty for anything or thirty for family?
Thirty for anything, thirty hours.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. So.
That's the rule of thumb.
So that's, that's a rule of thumb, but it used to be twenty hours for individual, for an individual and.
Right, it used to be, but oh, we have, we have employees that have, you know, and they hit that thirty hour, uh, mark and they have health insurance, so.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
So who's hitting the thirty hour mark? Who do we have that's actually at thirty? I didn't know we had really anybody.
Not on the town side.
Okay.
Jeffrey, we can talk about the, the changes at Public Works.
Changes at Public Works, Scott?
Yeah, seasonal worker, changing, uh.
Well, I mean, I can talk to some of that if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
So one of the issues right now is we used to have, you know, we used to have someone that, that worked part-time that was doing the cutting and things like that. But now that position, that person's now working for us full-time, so he's part of the regular crew. So what Eric is looking for is somebody part-time for a summer employment position. I know in, in Eric's proposal, and I'm sorry, that's not on this page unfortunately, Eric's proposal was to, um, you know, have that person come in and work, uh, have that person come in and, and work for the summer. I think he has it like sixteen bucks an hour or something. That's never gonna fly. You're not gonna get anybody for sixteen.
He doesn't have it at sixteen. He has it eighteen into one, eighteen to twenty.
Is that what he had it at?
He brings, he brings part-time work.
Can you tell me what they, that, what that sheet is?
That, that's on the.
Which one?
I think.
It's on, no, no, what sheet is it on?
Um, personnel changes, uh, version three.
Okay, version three. Let me see, I can search for that.
He brings, he brings seasonal workers are twenty. And they work, they work through October, I think.
Why couldn't we just get college students? I mean, and pay them fifteen dollars an hour?
Cause college students don't work for fifteen dollars an hour anymore.
They don't?
No.
How much do they work for?
Twenty bucks an hour.
They don't? Okay.
Try, try hiring one. Have you had any success? I can tell you I haven't unless I'm up closer to twenty. And keep in mind, this is an outside job. It's hot, it's grimy. It's not like they're sitting in air conditioning at Target, you know what I mean?
What do they make at Target? Thirteen, right?
Sixteen fifty an hour for Target in Manchester. That's the starting pay. Keep in mind, Scott, as a reminder, that minimum wage is gonna, as, as we just talked about, is gonna be fourteen next year and then fifteen by June. That's minimum wage, not like working your butt off running a weed whacker wage.
Well, let's sit there and say you, you charged sixteen dollars an hour. You paid sixteen dollars an hour for that position. Six hundred and forty dollars times eight weeks, five thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Right.
You're basically talking between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, depending upon your hourly rate.
I think if we want to get people consistently, we want them to stay for the summer, we need to be closer to twenty. So, and that's really what we're looking for, right?
And maybe we could get a teacher.
That's gonna leave us in August and then we, in the busiest, rainiest month of the summer, we're not gonna have, be cutting. I mean, look, I, I, like, we're, we're literally, we're, we're hemming and hawing over, you know, what, three grand here?
That's, just put it in the budget and, and see where it all comes out.
Can we put it in the budget at twenty?
I, I would say eighteen.
Are you doing two employees?
Eighteen would be fair.
Jeff Murray, Paula? Paula, you're shaking your head. You're not saying anything.
I, I, I don't have experience in this, so I'm kind of leaning towards what Adrian says, because he's got experience, but I don't know.
You're just, you know, I don't, I, I mean, I, I understand where Paula's coming from. She's just going, there's just additional money that's being added to this budget. So, okay, so you're basically looking at sixty-four hundred dollars an employee plus benefits, so.
And we're asking for one, we're asking for one employee for the summer and there are no benefits, because it's a seasonal position.
I understand. I, I misspoke. There's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're big and.
Only taxes.
Yeah.
So other taxes, so even if I just give you the eight hundred dollars times eight weeks is sixty-four hundred dollars. There's probably another five hundred to a thousand dollars more. Kind of just.
Yeah.
So, so it, let's sit there and say, are you looking for one or two?
One.
He's, he's sucking for seventeen weeks, Jeff.
Yeah, one person, right? I still can't find that sheet.
I, yeah, I don't see it either.
Yeah, seventeen weeks.
It's part of the email that he sent that we were all looking at before.
Right, what's, what is?
It's a word, it's a word document. It says personnel change.
Right. It was in the last email that he sent you before he left.
It's, it's the one that Adrian referred to, the eighteenth at four twelve.
Right.
There's.
It's in that one?
There's a, there's now nine files in there.
Personnel change options, version three.
Right.
Just don't look at the spelling.
Oh, yeah, it's cutting it off. That's my problem. Thank you.
Yeah.
I hate the way this, they, it condenses everything. Personal change options, is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That, that's not all that he's asking for. He's asking to change a maintainer's
Right.
level.
Mm-hmm.
And he's also really wants another person.
Yes. So. And I, I agree basically to all of it. I, I think that all this stuff needs to be done. Especially if we're gonna, if we're gonna start, you know, keep ramping up and doing more and more work, you know, between Jay running around doing the tree stuff and keeping an eye on the other job sites, you know, and then, you know, keeping an eye on what's going on over the bridge, you know? He, he's basically, he's not part of the crew anymore. So we're right back to where we were, you know?
Adrian, if you were, if you were gonna guess, long-term, how long do you think a lot of these projects that were, I mean, paving is gonna be for a long time, obviously, but the bridge and other things that.
I think we're, we're basically doing this stuff for at least the next ten years. I think we'll, we're, a lot of this, you know, as we, once we get done with pavement preservation, we're gonna then start actually looking at repaving projects more of it, right? And by that time, in the next, you know, three years, we're gonna be ramping up our drainage stuff. So between now and that third year, we need to be doing more drainage in-house to prep the roads for those types of changes, right? So um, even if we talk about paving, we want to, we want to be putting in drainage basins ourselves because that's cheaper than something that work out before they come and pave. You know, we're saving substantially by doing our own basins. Um, so they do the basins, you know, when you go down the street, they raise the basins and they prep them and get them ready for paving. It's that type of prep work where we're putting in a new basin, putting in a new cap, getting it to the right height. The more of that we can do in-house to prep for paving and those types of things, the more we save.
Right, but where is this document? And we need Eric to tell us. I know they're doing shoddy mill, but where, where's the next one, Adrian? I want something to validate what you're saying.
Well, this is, I mean, this has been the conversation for the last three years as we start, we know we've got give or, give or take well over a hundred culverts in town that have to be addressed.
I want to see what the next paving job is. I think Skinner Hill. But you know, Paula's kind of on the right track here because, you know, what, down the road, where is, where is our personnel needs gonna be?
Well, it's, it's not, I mean, so as we get caught up with paving, that's really, we're gonna see us ramp up in culverts, right? We've, we've been talking on and on about how much culvert is our, our, our next, it's sort of the, the silent but deadly that's sitting behind us that we're gonna have issues with. You know, and I'm not talking about like the big culvert like over in Basala. I'm talking about a bunch of these small ones that are gonna be issues we're gonna have to be proactive about.
That you.
Yeah, I understood, but what I believe Paula and Scott are asking is where is the list of the projects that are gonna be undertaken if we add a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to the public works personnel?
It's not about adding to those projects, i- or adding projects. It's about keeping up with the projects that we have.
What is the list and where is it?
Well, Eric, Eric had given us a.
The work.
Like literally given us a laundry list last year. I don't know if he's updated it for this year.
Because I know the tree work, Adrian, is coming, is, is slowly coming to an end. It's, I mean, it's gonna be less work. It's gonna be less work.
Right.
Done a really good job over the last.
But, but, but again, a perfect example of what, what happened this year, and this is why it's, it's about keeping up. It's not about adding. So the tree work was a big issue this year. The bridge being out was an issue this year. And so we didn't get to do the stuff we were supposed to do over on shoddy. Right? So now we're literally behind on shoddy.
Yeah.
And that's my point is that because we don't have the staffing, we're gonna end up keeping, falling behind. We don't have enough staff to do, in, in, no matter what we plan for, there's always gonna be a bridge that's an issue or a culvert that's an issue, or a big storm that comes through. And we don't have the, we don't have the capacity to buffer for that at all right now. And that's really what we're talking about. It's not just about, it's about being able to adapt the guys that we have to be able to keep up instead of falling behind. I mean, we have all these great ideas, but these great ideas are, are, are formed in a vacuum before the reality of a bridge and a storm and a snowstorm and a culvert collapsing and, you know.
We're not gonna be working on, we're not gonna be working on Bunker Hill anymore until they tear it out of there. And the next thing we're gonna be doing is working on shoddy mill.
Right.
And then, then I want to know where we going after that, because they have enough guys to work on shoddy mill right now. Where is the next thing? I think it's. Eric's gonna be here to tell us that.
I think it's important that, what Adrian is saying is keeping up, and I think it's important to let the community know that if we're. I think it's important that, what Adrian is saying is keeping up, and I think it's important to let the community know that if we're asking for this money, these are the projects that.
Projects, exactly.
Taking care of in the next.
Right.
Year, three years, and you know, just keep going.
And we can, and we can have Jay address that directly when he comes in and say, you know, look, this, this is our whole list of things that we have. But, again, our, it isn't just about what's on the list, it's about the day-to-day function. And you know, and, and a part of it is our fault too, because, you know, we grabbed, we grabbed, you know, we grabbed them this year, it was for, you know, to get over there and, and, and do a bunch of work on, on Monument Park, right? On the Veterans Park, so, um, and, and that, that didn't seem like a little thing, but that was a week plus out of their schedule. Between the digging and running over and helping move stuff and dropping stuff off, all of a sudden, we took a week out of their summer schedule. You know?
Two weeks out of mine too, Adrian.
Right, and so I'll get you an assistant too, put it in the budget, my, my point is that as we're talking about this, we're acting like we don't know these things are there, when they're literally right in front of us.
Listen, we know that, I, I don't know about you, Adrian, but we've all been on this board, we all know the issues there. The issue, the issue is really addressing it to the rest of the community, getting them to support whatever increase we sit there and try to put forward.
Okay.
That's the issue.
Yeah, I would just like to ask Eric, what's, what's the plan, because if we add a person and we start catching up.
Exactly.
I.
We're never, we're never gonna catch up, just so we're clear.
Okay, I, I'm.
I'd love to think we will.
I just wanna make sure that we're, we're justifying this.
Paula, I would, I would sit there and tell you that if you add an extra person, the hope is, is that they're managed properly and that the town keeps doing better and better things and, and there is, there is an aesthetic appeal that starts to happen across the community.
And, and, yeah, and, and when, when we start talking about this though, right? When we, when we start talking about, it's, it's little things that we don't even realize, so I'll give you a perfect example. We all know that Townsend got paved, right, a couple of years ago? It took them five months to get back over to do the shoring on the side of the paving that keeps the paving from collapsing on the edges. They literally couldn't, they didn't have the time to get back over there and do the completion of the project, which is one of the most important parts of it, is literally protecting the edges of the pavement.
I, I, I think they're babysitting the tree crews.
Right.
Adrian a lot, and, and so if we get this seasonal guy, which I'm all for, but is he gonna take Richard Begans' mowing job? It doesn't say that.
Yes, he is.
Well, well, it doesn't say that in here.
Well, we're still gonna have Richard doing some stuff, but, you know, we may.
Adrian, what you, what you were trying to sell us was that, um, they're gonna be two men crew and they're gonna be doing this.
But Scott, you're asking for, literally, I mean, I'm getting a little frustrated, cause literally you're asking for a day-to-day schedule, so I'll give you a perfect example, right? So, Richard Began comes in tomorrow, right, and it's summer, and by the way, we don't have a project for him at this moment. But, we've got somebody else working in town, so now we have our part-time guy go over and do, um, go do, go over and do traffic for that guy, you know, for our, for our paving guys, and maybe that day, Richard ends up on the mower. There literally is always something for the other guy.
Yeah.
You know, so yes, there may be days that Richard mows certain areas because he's quicker and he's more efficient on, on, or a more complicated area. But in general, Richard would then be, would be moving forward on, on other bigger projects that require a different skill set, right? And, and when on days where, where we maybe need that, that guy mowing on, doing, uh, providing traffic, which again, saves us money, because now instead of us paying, you know, forty something dollars an hour to the crew that's in town doing some, you know, some subwork, we provide them with tra, and we provide them with, um.
We don't, you're a hundred percent right, Adrian, but we don't need to micromanage the.
I know, but that's what it sounds like.
I, I, I understand, I'm talking in a general sense. We don't need, if we believe that, and Eric is asking us for additional resources and we believe those resources can be used properly, then we, we try to push it forward.
Right.
Whether it gets approved or not is a different, but to get it approved.
Scott, we'll have Eric, we'll have Eric, Eric and Jay put something together.
Right, just, yeah, just listen.
Yeah, there needs to be a real.
Just listen.
Tangible list that people can sit there and, and relate to, because not everybody is like you, Adrian, not everybody understands all the details of everything that's going on and how it's supposed to work and where it's supposed to go. We wanna know, I mean, and, and listen, to be really honest, in the last three years, there's more that's been done in this town than the previous twelve years before. And people, if people can't see it, then I can't help them. But, that's what's happened.
I mean, and, and listen, our crew is still adapting to some of those changes. One of the biggest ones is the one we just put in, in like the last three, you know, four months of the year, where we hired that person to come in and start doing some maintenance. Cause otherwise, that was literally Public Works, we would pull Public Works people to go and change a lightbulb.
Right, so that's why we need a high level.
Yeah, no, we're gonna do that, we're, we're definitely gonna, Eric and Jay will do that for you. Scott, you said to just listen, what did you wanna add to that?
Well, listen to what we're saying also, Adrian, that's all I'm saying.
Is there anything else, though, that you're looking for besides an evaluation on road projects going forward and, you know?
I would say I'd, I'd like to know what everybody's gonna be, um, what their skill sets are gonna be.
Okay.
I mean, basically, Eric, Eric has a box here, if this is updated, he's, 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 he's basically saying we should consider up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of total staffing increases. And, I mean, that's not a small amount of money.
Where did you see that, Jeff?
It's on the network. On the very last page, there's a box with a list of things that he's looking for.
Yeah. Hey, listen, Eric, Eric knows he's not gonna get it all, but he's sitting there, he's sitting there telling us that.
Matter of fact, I kinda laughed about it, because I, I didn't think that, you know.
But listen, we should do it, we, 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 we should do it, but that requires.
Well, well, listen, and I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very honest with you guys. They weren't even considering the other person down at Public Works, because they thought there was not a snowball's chance in hell that we as a group, or, you know, would, would, would let this pass by. And I told them very clearly, I think they should put it in if they thought they needed it, because we need to get past this point where we, we don't ask for things, cause we're afraid someone's gonna say no. I think the community can look at the work that we've done in the last three years here and say, wow, the transfer station looks like a whole new place, the roads are getting done, the tree work is getting done. You know, we're looking at building a new building as a possibility. We're, we're renovating the town hall to, to function more correctly, whether it's the, you know, now looking at the air conditioning, the heating. We're doing all the things that should have been being done in the first place, and so now I think if we go back to them and we go to the town and honestly say, we need X, Y, and Z, and here's why. Hopefully, we have built enough trust with all the things that we've done, that they give us, give it to us. And so I suggested that they put this stuff in there, if they want, if they really felt they, they needed it, and that we could have this discussion, so I'm glad we're having it, and we'll let them support the arguments when they come back.
Pub, he, he wants to increase the public works this year a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
That's just personnel staff.
Right, right, but, but last year, the Board of Finance took, what, they take ten thousand dollars out of the overtime for the public work, so.
And then, and then, and then a bridge went underwater, so that went out the window, didn't it? So.
Yeah, that, that money's all gone already.
There's, 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 you, if you do not, if you do not ask and you do not support it, well, if you don't support it properly, asking for it, well, you'll get nothing.
Right, nope, and so I think they can support it, let's let them do that, what's, what's the next thing on our agenda list?
That's it, we were, we were going through these, I mean, you wanna go through all the rest of, I mean, I don't believe this cost thing is totally updated, but, I mean.
No, we're almost at our hour and a half anyways, we got ten minutes, so.
What about the custodian?
He just got hired, so he'll get the regular, he'll get the regular three percent, that's it.
He's hap, he's happy with what he's got.
I gotta say that I've never seen the town hall so clean.
I know, isn't it?
And what did he, and look at what he did at the gazebo, look at what he did with the gazebo too.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It's amazing.
Yep.
So.
Absolutely.
He's got a list of things that he wants to improve too, so.
There's the guy we wanna keep.
It's a good thing, Hebron absolutely loves them, so.
Yep.
You know, good things. So, I guess for my purpose, am I adding any of these positions and costing them out and then?
We're asking you, we're asking you to add, yes, add a line, cost it out, and then we, they, if, if Eric can.
I mean, it's all, always can be deleted, but at least if it's there.
So we're asking you to do the pre-work, so that we can see what it really looks like in the budget.
Right, okay.
Adrian, you were talking about A H M earlier.
Yes.
They're giving a presentation tomorrow at the Board of Finance meeting, so I don't know if you wanna jump on, ask questions there, or watch the meeting, or do you want them to come and present something at our next workshop?
I don't know, that's the one time I'm gonna be stuck, is we have a, we have a, we have a budget workshop tomorrow night on the school side.
Yeah. Well, maybe you can watch the meeting back, and if you don't have your, you don't have your questions answered, we can ask them to present at the next one, or, or something, so.
Um, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Board of Finance and see if they can move that to the beginning, so that I can maybe see that and, and, um, and ask any question that might be appropriate. That way they don't have to present twice.
Right, right.
Unless, unless anyone else on the board wants to see them present here as well, that's up to you guys. Does anyone else have questions on that budget change?
I, I, I think you brought up some good points in your email, so. And, uh, thank you Amanda for pointing that out about tomorrow night.
Oh, if that came from Amanda, thank you.
You're welcome, they're actually first up on the agenda tomorrow, Adrian, so maybe that would help?
Yeah, that would help.
All right, so, we're going to sit there and share, and please ask Eric to, when you put those lines in, well, we'll all talk to Eric, I mean, we just need that support.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, we're just, we're looking for a support from him.
Yeah, so.
No, I think Eric wanted to change the hours for the, uh, building official to seven.
And they're at five, right?
Yeah.
And I'm okay with that too, I mean, one of the things we got going on right now is, you know, we've got some things we gotta, he needs more time definitely to come into town and, and look at some of the projects, because, you know. I mean, I, I personally found three job sites in town that didn't have dumpsters. So.
Right.
Very frustrating, oh, speaking of, and we'll have to address this, I'll, I'll send an email out, but we had a, we had someone that had one of those temporary passes that we give out to people.
Mm-hmm.
Literally backing up to a dumpster six times last weekend and dumping a dump trunk full into a dumpster.
At the transfer station?
Yeah, transfer station. I went through twice, you know, cause I couldn't fit all my garbage in my, in my, in my car. And I went through, down the second time with, you know, cardboard, did all my garbage and did cardboard, and they were back there again.
Um, where was that debris coming from?
So supposedly, they're cleaning out a house, it's a residence house here in Andover, but what the guy did is he went and got a, us, he got, went and got a thing from Carol, and then he paid someone to clean out the house, and they literally just took everything down and dumped it in the thing. So, we need to, we need to, we can't be doing that anymore. Apparently, this is kinda common, when these guys get these temporary, you know, passes, this is what they're doing. And they're not even doing it themselves, they're hiring a, a commercial crew to do it, that's not cool, so.
Oh, they should have got their own dumpster.
Right, right, I mean, they literally, they single-handedly filled up a thirty yard.
A whole dumpster.
Yeah, thirty yards.
Six hundred bucks.
So.
Okay, uh, item four correspondence, we have none, unless anyone else wants to have any more discussion on any other items?
No, I'm good.
Okay, uh, public speak, so we'll go through it, um, Marcy Minor.
Hi, um, I was wondering what you were talking about, the seasonal job, uh, cause I do have experience hiring people to mow, and I wasn't quite following what you guys were looking for. Um, I agree with Adrian that, that, I think that we all, um, have noticed that the town has been doing a lot more in the last few years, and I think that's fantastic. And I'm sure that the town has more support than they would have had five years ago. But as far as the, um, a seasonal job and hiring a person to mow grass, is that what it's for?
Um, weed whacking, you know, traffic control.
Roadside, roadside mowing is probably the biggest portion of it though, running the, uh, running the roadside mower.
So, but in my experience, uh, most of the mowing happens in the spring, in the fall, in the summertime, it, it drops off a little bit.
Yes, and we would, we would shift that person to traffic control for the paving guys in the, in the summer, as, when the mowing drops off, yeah.
It sounds like you could almost add another person, you know, a low-level person, full-time.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the union contracts, that it would be cost prohibitive, that's why we were trying to look at seasonal, you know? I mean, Marcy, you hire guys in this, this kind of area, it sounds like, I mean.
Yes.
When we start talking about, you know, eighteen or twenty dollars an hour, are we in the ballpark, or, or can we get away with sixteen?
Um, you can get away with sixteen, I think eighteen is, is easier, uh, especially with, you know, being a town job, you know, might look a little more appealing than, um, you know, someone like us with a small company. But, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think you have to go to twenty.
Okay, thank you for the feedback.
Thank you, Marcy.
Okay, Diane Chukka.
I'm all set, thank you.
Kim Persson.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, thank you. Joanne Eber.
At this point, thank you.
Liz, um, I know you told me how to say it before.
Come on, catching the ball low.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Um, so, I, I just had a, a question, um, I'm not real familiar with the school program. Seeing so, I'm, I'm an elder and I don't have children, uh, in the school, um, can, you know, with the discussion about whether or not it should become part of the town or kept separate, can anybody tell me if any of our town taxes pays for any of that, or do they pay rent for all the, whatever they use? How does that work?
There are no taxes used to support Cool. The only thing that Cool does is get utilization of the facility, but the use of the facility for, uh, parents who need the service. I, it is a great service, I, I used it my entire time with my two children, so.
Okay, today, so what you were proposing was to try and get it to be, um, some way of, of making money for the town, is that?
No, not, not making, not making money, I mean, not understanding, I, I just didn't believe it should be a, a town program, and then the individual that runs it should be, should be a, a full-time employee for the town, running all of the programs of town. That's my thought, that's always been.
Well, in addition to other things that we could add to that.
Oh, I see, okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Mike W.
I'm all set right now.
All right, thank you very much. Amanda, would you like to say anything, because you are always extra special, we greatly appreciate everything you do.
You know, I actually wanted to jump in and ask if you'd like to see anything in particular on the next agenda, or just kinda keep it general every time for the workshops?
I, I personally would say I think we're probably gonna end up reaching out to Eric, and then very specifically, we need to map this out a little bit, I think sort of drifting through is not gonna work, so.
So having a game plan for each workshop?
Yeah, so I think workshop, whereas we do, maybe next time we finish up this employee stuff, the time after that, maybe we look at capital, time after that, we look at, you know, um, extraneous stuff or other, you know, how, of, effects. Extraneous stuff or other, you know, how, of, effects.
We'll sit there and each, to get to Eric, so that he can hear from each of us and regarding what we wanna do. But I don't disagree with where Adrian is, is headed, uh, I mean, but I don't necessarily think we'll spend. We have to really map it out, and you're gonna have to leave some general items there, so that we can sit there and expand upon what we're doing.
Well, and everybody can be ready with the, having looked at the documents, instead of saying, look at the whole budget. We can look at very specific things, and, you know, not be digging through for all this as we go.
Good, all right, uh, Sherry, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, I just want a quick question, um, just because it's my first time going around. Are you gonna be asking for individual departments to come forward and? Um, present their budget and be available for any questions that you may have?
Usually, that's how it goes, um.
Okay.
You know, but. I think what we should do is, we should sit there and see where their budget is going and, and. At the end, in the last few budget meetings, we should ask specific departments if we have problems with them, but. Any of the departments that wanna present to us, we should put them on a list, like Adrian said, and go through individually.
Well, can I, can I mildly disagree with that? I think that our time is most wisely spent, looking at, looking at the changes we feel need to make. If we're making a change, a drastic change to a budget, um, specifically in the downside. Then I think we have to bring in that, that entity and talk to them. But if we're accepting their budget as is, and it's easily understood, I don't feel like we should be taking time. Away from this process to listen to someone supportive, but you know, give us all the details of a budget we already are supportive of.
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
Yeah.
Jeff, you okay with that?
I think that's wonderful, yes.
Okay. I just don't want every single person coming through and giving a presentation, I just, we have enough of these workshops already, so.
I was more concerned with the people that, you know, you make changes to, and if it's drastic enough, you know.
Absolutely, if we're making a change, yeah.
There's only a few departments that want to present to us anyway.
Okay.
We all know those departments, and if they wanna present to us, then put them present to us.
Okay, thank you.
So, anyway, anything else that anyone else wants to discuss before we adjourn?
Nope, thanks for keep putting a timeline on, folks, I appreciate it.
All right, so we wanna make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor, I, see you guys later.
Good night.